Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September 6th regular meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. And happy start of the school year. I look forward to hearing how things have been going with that. So our first order of business is approval of the agenda. Tom? And a second? Heather? All in favor? And we have seven in favor. Next order of business is public comments. Are there any members of the public here this evening? See any? Okay, moving along. Approval of the regular meeting minutes. We have two, so I guess we'll start with the August 2nd regular meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Gianna? And second by Heather? Any corrections to the August 2nd? Yes, Gianna?
Yes, I'm trying to pull it up now. I reviewed what I had said, kind of as requested by watching the videos, and I resubmitted it to Karen. I'm trying to find out, oh my gosh, what day today? I'm sorry. I've had a very frantic day. Karen, are you able to pull that up? I emailed that to you earlier. Okay. I'm sorry, it's on the operative problem here is the fact that I am not particularly wonderful with Outlook. Yeah. So on the August 2nd minutes, one of the things that I did not actually say the word "unique," Dan did.
Gianna, could you tell us, I'm sorry, could you tell us what page you're on, please?
Yes, page three of four, under F Superintendent Search Committee. I wanted to strike the phrase "unique role" because it's actually not unique. There are three other DEIJ directors in the state, so that's not unique. But I want to replace it with a statement, "The position highlights the district's priorities, and the district spent considerable effort and political capital in developing the needed position." I reviewed the minutes, and I did say that. Secondly, under Section 7 unanimous consent, I wanted to add, after the stipends comment, says "add determined stipends." She pointed out, she meaning me, "She pointed out there's a disparity between athletic and academic stipends. Dr. Morris said the athletic stipends are typically higher than academic ones, regiely and the stipends given reflect that." That's for August 2nd, and that obviously has been submitted to Karen. Thank you.
Any other corrections to August 2nd?
My question, Gianna, is what you said and I said, or just what you said? Because you said something after what you said, and I said something in return.
What you had said was that when I asked the question about whether or why the difference between the athletic and academic stipends, you had stated that they were typically higher than academic ones.
And is that part of the correction as well?
Yes, because I wanted to show the yes, you did say that, yes.
Okay, all in favor with those corrections? And we have seven in favor. Moving on to the August 16th regular meeting minutes, can I have a motion to approve those? Gianna? Can I have a second? Tom? Any corrections to the August 16th minutes? Gianna?
Just wanted to add on page two, Section B, at the end of the first paragraph, Gian Gelsi had also independently submitted a letter to the Board of Education asking to not accredit per review due to other content issues. Dr. Morris then asked if the Board wished to submit a letter to the Board of Education.
And Karen has that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other corrections? All right. In that case, all in favor? And there are seven in favor of those as well. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
There's no button anymore. Oh, that's nice. Hi, everyone, I'm David Goldsmith, Principal of Mohermit. Nice to see you all. We've had a wonderful start to the school year. It's been, you know, first and foremost, I just need to say welcome back to all of our families and students. It's been just fabulous to have them back in our building. We have about 20 new students in grades one through four, plus all of our new kindergarteners we also welcome back. It's been lovely. It's been positive. It's been smooth for all of our students. We're establishing our routines and our expectations. We do that every year, of course. We've already had an all-school assembly where we welcomed everybody, sang our school song, talked about our motto. We are kind, we are responsible, and we are learners. We use that motto all throughout the day. We create our expectations within those three categories. We even organize our open circle lessons within those three categories. What does it mean to be kind in all these different settings? What does it mean to be responsible? What does it mean to be a learner everywhere, from the hallway to the bus to the playground to, obviously, academic learning experiences? This is the Year of Water at Mohermit. You know, we have an enrichment theme every year, and this is a new one for us, the Year of Water. We have had the Year of the Ocean before, but we're being broader than that. We're looking at science, recreation, geography, conservation, and more for water, just in general. It's such, obviously, a huge part of our life and our world. We're already connecting with a lot of scientists and engineers and community members and artists to help us enrich the lives of our students in that way. Of course, I have to make a huge shout-out to our staff, from facilities and kitchen to, of course, our teachers and our parent educators, for the incredible work they've done over the summertime, both in exploring new instructional methods, curriculum. We've had some updates to some of the programs that we use, and they've been working really, really diligently to understand those and use them as effectively as possible when they teach our students. We've had new staff that we've welcomed. They're all really outstanding. We constantly just add really wonderful thinkers and personalities and people to our building, which is lovely. And we do have an all-school open house coming up this month, on Thursday, the 28th. We always do, well, this will be our second year doing it. We do half the school, and then the other half of the school, we split by alphabet so that we have enough parking, and that way families with students in multiple grades can stay together and go see all of their teachers.
David, is that all happening on the 28th? Is splitting them on the same day?
Yep, exactly right. Questions? Comments? Awesome. Thanks.
Ms. DeLoe from Massway School. We also had a wonderful opening. We have talked a lot about the importance of connection. We are focusing on our SEL curriculum, open circle, making sure that our priority in these opening days is connecting with kids, developing relationships with our students and our parents. So you will hear us talk about connect, connect, connect at Massway. That's really the priority during our opening days. I did want to share a few dates here. I want to let folks know that our PTO is having their annual Mums Sale, so if you are interested in any Fall Mums, that is on our PTO's website, as well as their Facebook page. It's a big fundraiser that they do annually. We do have Picture Day this Friday. That's very exciting. I know it's supposed to be one of the hot of our hot days this week, but we do have Picture Day scheduled for Friday, September 8th. I also wanted to share with the community that our technology integrator, Ms. Lifer, is offering two parent nights to make sure that parents can come in, meet her, answer any questions about digital safety, about logging in, any technology-related questions. There's a kindergarten-specific tech night on September 13th, and a second tech night for grades one through four on September 14th. Ms. Lifer has worked with Ms. Best at the high school, and we will have students from National Honor Society offering childcare from six to seven on those evenings for technology. And then we, too, have open house on September 28th, like our friends at Mohermit, from 5:30 to 7:00. We are having a full-school open house. It's a drop-in. I will be sending out a map. We've worked with the town, as well as our neighbors at the church, to ensure that we have plenty of parking for families. Parking can be tricky when you have a full-school event, so we're just emphasizing to families, 5:30 to 7:00, it's really a drop-in, whatever time is best for your family. There is no expectation that you come and stay for that full-time, and, like I said, we'll be sending a map that gives a visual to families, so they'll know their parking options as well. Any questions? Yes?
One more night, the two technology dates. One more time.
Two technology dates. The 13th and the 14th, both from six to seven. The 13th is specifically for parents of kindergartners, to introduce them to iPads and things of that nature. And then grades one through four is the following night, from six to seven. Thank you.
Bill Sullivan, Oyster River Middle School. We, as well, had an unbelievable opening. Kids were really excited to be here. Staff was in, you know, the greatest of moods, welcoming kids. It was an awesome place to be, and it continues to be. Dates for us, well, actually, let me go back. One of the highlights for us was, this is the first time since we've been open, we've had all our outdoor facilities available to us. So last year, when we opened up, the playground was just getting open, but we didn't have a field. So this year, we had our basketball court, and that area opened up. We have our playground up and running, and we also had our field. So we had all our facilities in order, and everything was great. Couple dates for us. Picture Day is tomorrow. It'll be right here in this room. We also have our open house coming up on Tuesday, September 19th, and that'll be from 6:00 to 7:30. Our sports are starting this week. We've got field hockey, we've got soccer going on, volleyball's going on indoors, and our cross-country team is, unfortunately, due to the heat, we had to suspend that practice today because out at DeMarette, that was just too far away for them, not a safe environment. So that'll be starting soon, too. We have our club starting up soon, and the one club we have going right now is our drama club, and the performance this year will be Oliver, and that'll be coming this fall/winter. Any questions? Yeah, Brian?
Bill, I know sports hasn't exactly started yet, but have they used the stands yet? The new stands?
When I left yesterday, we had soccer going, and there were some parents sitting in the bleachers, yes, watching. So we haven't had any games yet, but that's going to be a nice addition for people to be able to watch from there.
Do they work as a grill?
They did today, I can tell you that. All right. Yes?
The open house on the 19th, is that a whole-school open house, or will there be slots for the grade levels?
Right now, I haven't worked out the exact details yet. Last year, we had two open houses, and that was challenging to do both with some of our staff, and some of our staff that works at both high school and the middle school, so we're going to try to put it into one. Talking about maybe alphabetical, talking about, it is going to be an issue with parking. So I'm working that out with staff now. So when I have that information, I'll let you know. All right, anything else? All right, thank you.
Rebecca Noe, Principal at the high school. I'll start with some things we've already done to report out. We had our introduction to high school, where about over half of the freshman class and their parents came. We had two sessions of that, so that went really well for both parents and students. We had our freshman orientation. We changed it a little bit this year, so they had time with their advisor and their other advisees. They were able to play some group games. They followed their schedule around the high school, so they knew where their classrooms were. We had a little introduction to high school, just for the admin team, and then also Celeste Best passed out the computers, and they actually got into their computers and opened a few things to make sure they worked and knew where its school logi was and what Power School was. So overall, it was from 11:30 to 3:00, and I have to thank the Durham Police Department again. They provided pizza. Kids loved it. The teachers that were there loved it. We actually had our freshman advisors there, and so they spent the time with their advisories. So it went very well, and we're always tweaking to make it better for next year. We had our senior sunrise, and so it's the first one, and it's going to become an annual event, where 75 students from the senior class met at 5:30 a.m. at the beach. They brought their own griddle. They made some breakfast things. They had some donuts and some coffee, saw the sunrise, took a great picture, and so they've decided to make it an annual thing, so I thought it was a lot of fun for them. Our first two days of school were very positive. The kids were in great spirits. It was really nice having all the energy back in the building. I've heard back from teachers that they enjoyed the teacher workshop days. The whole opening was just really positive, and so that's carried into this week. Kids are already with homework. I see them studying. The senior corps has chairs in it again, so that's been really nice to just have that activity and energy back. With the heat this week, so we are still working on that second-floor air conditioning, but we have teachers in the building who have offered their air-conditioned rooms. So with the auditorium and other places that are air-conditioned, it's been very collaborative as they help each other out. So just any spaces that do get hot, we're finding spaces for those classes to go and keep on working. Things coming up, we had the Fall Play auditions today. The play is going to be arsenic and old lace, and so we'll see where that goes. That should be a lot of fun. I did tell our director, Alex Eustace, my dad was actually in that, and he told me about charging up the stairs, so I'm kind of excited to see what he thinks about that. Picture Day for us is also tomorrow. We have our senior picture tomorrow, too, and so they take the senior picture where they make the 2024 on the field. We also do that at the end of the year when they're in their caps and gowns. There are actually two different senior photos that they can get. We have our NEF Senior College Night, September 12th, next Tuesday. That's at 6:00 p.m. in the auditorium. And then we have the Brown Center coming up, so we take the freshman class to the Brown Center with advisories. Half the class will go on Friday, September 29th, and half the class will go on Monday, October 2nd. And they do team-building activities and really come together as an advisory and then as a class, and so it's a good way to begin the year, and that's before Spirit Week. And last but not least, we also have open house. That's October 5th. We are defining those times. It's probably going to be at 6:00 p.m., but I'll confirm that at the next school board meeting. It is a little bit different than the other schools in the fact that we actually have parents follow their students' schedule, so it's not just a drop-in model. So we will have those for you, or you can print them out beforehand, but there'll be a lot of communication about that. But you would start in one class and then follow the schedule, make announcements on what class to go to next, but it's a little bit different than the other schools, so just so parents know that. Any questions for me? Yes?
Hi. Thank you for that good rendition of what was going on. I have a freshman this year, and she enjoyed the freshman orientation, and I went to the parent one as well, and I found it very beneficial, so thank you very much for that. I do have one thing to say. Some community members reached out to me regarding this, and I noticed this as well, and this is just food for thought. I'm aware that we have, the district has an excellent relationship with the Durham Police Department, and we have an exemplary SRO in Officer Nicolosi. However, one thing we might want to think about is what it might look like to some of our students, who are particularly the ones who are of marginalized communities or people of color, when they come into the high school. During freshman orientation, they were greeted with four to five police officers, and that could be a very intimidating experience for some of these communities, and it doesn't necessarily look welcoming. And so it's something I thought we might want to reflect on, of what that might look like to some folks, and to think about that moving forward, particularly in the view that we're working more towards things, towards disciplinary action, towards restorative justice. So it's just something I wanted us to think about moving forward.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. I think my first thoughts in hearing that were, I understand, but I do think the intention is to have that friendly face with gift-giving of pizza and being in a celebratory atmosphere. It is actually the second event of the freshman orientation, so they actually meet with us. We greet them. We talk about, actually, this class has a wonderful reputation coming in, so it's really them meeting all the administrators and leadership in the building. And after that, we're kind of like, all right, next pizza. And so it is something to think about, but I do think so far it's been a positive experience, and the police officers who are there are very welcoming and talk to the kids and joke around with them, and it's all about the giving of pizza and not supposed to be intimidating. But we can also look at, if anyone were to feel that way, how can we make it even more welcoming? Absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Rachel Blansett, DIJ Director for the District. I just have a few updates, some upcoming things that are happening. So the DIJ Committee Group will be starting again on Tuesday, September 26th, at 6:00 p.m. in the high school library. The agenda can be found on the new district website, and I am actually incredibly excited to see where we can take this group this year and see what kind of work we can do together. Another thing that is going to be a large focus, I feel, in my position this year, I am going to be really focusing on students and trying to create spaces for them to feel a sense of belonging, to feel a sense of community and support. So right now, we only have kind of student identity spaces, or like we have the Pride Student Space, or we just started the Middle School BIPOC Student Space, so both at the middle school, and right now, there's not really anything at the high school. And so I'm going to be creating spaces for students, so an LGBTQIA+ Student Space and also a BIPOC Student Space. I am intending on holding those groups, starting the week of September 25th, and they will be meeting the BIPOC Student Space, hopefully on blue days during the second flex period, so it's an optional, they can opt in, stop by. And then the LGBTQIA+ Space is hopefully on the white days during their flex three period. So each 30 minutes, any student is welcome, but it is really intended to just have that extra layer of community and support for students who may not feel like they have that space already embedded in the school day.
Rachel, can you spell out what BIPOC means?
Yes, so that is going to be Black, Indigenous, and People of Color. So it's essentially a Student of Color space, yes. But anyone is welcome. And then additionally, I have been in conversation with Seacoast Outright, and they have done this parent/caregiver support space, particularly at the elementary level, but it can be open to any parent or community member that has a child either transitioning or identify within the LGBTQIA+ community. And it's really just a space for parents or caregivers to come together, seek support, education, have children, form some community, you know, with other children who might be identifying within the same community. So I'm going to be working with them to hopefully create a space in the coming months, and I'll be touching base with the elementary school principals to talk more about those details. And then lastly, our middle school BIPOC Space is going to be continuing. I will be working with Rihanna Cody, one of the middle school counselors, and Joe Dunn. We're going to be facilitating the space together, hopefully starting the space back up again in October. So, and then lastly, this summer, we were able, so I've been working with UNH Extension Programs on the True Leaders in Equity program that they hold, and this summer, we had our two selected students go to Bethesda, Maryland. They got to be, because this is originally a 4-H program, and so they got to be around different 4-H students, meet mentors. It's a really great resource-rich organization that helps to support different students, particularly marginalized students, who are in fields more focused on like agriculture and farming and stuff like that. So it was a really cool space for our students to get to connect with other students across the country, who are also kind of committed to equity work. And within that space, they got to explore DC, and they also got to meet with folks and theorize an action plan for their different projects that they are going to be spending this year on. So I am going to be touching base with them, starting next week, most likely on a weekly basis, to, you know, work on their project plans and make sure that they're hitting their goals, so that they're able to complete their projects and present in May. So that's going to be a huge, also, project that I'm working on this year.
Rachel, will they present to the school board when their project's done?
I can ask them, yeah.
I think the board would love to see that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. And that is everything. Does anyone have any questions? Awesome, thank you.
That it for district. Next, then, board announcements? Board announcements. I know it's still early in the school year. So, oops, sorry, I'm a little too close. Next? Oh, excuse me, Gianna.
The feedback was my fault. I apologize. There's one thing I was going to update on, is that the school board, the NH School Board Association meeting is coming up, and they did ask for people to register, and I went ahead and registered, at least myself, to go. Just wanted to let people know that it's coming up.
We actually have further down on our agenda. We'll be talking more about the meeting after that. So, thank you. So next, we have Assistant Superintendent.
I just wanted to reiterate what the principals said about the opening of school. It went off really well. A lot of hands have to go into making the school year start off well, like transportation and child nutrition services and everyone, and the principals absolutely had to do a lot of work behind the scenes to get the school year off, so I just want to thank everybody for that. I also want to thank Jim for starting the school year off with a wonderful welcome-back, and was very inspiring, and I think that really set the tone for everybody in the district. I wanted to speak a little bit about some of the trends that I'm starting to see with homelessness and N68 Hours of Hunger. So I'm, as the McKinney-Vento liaison for the district, I'm noticing a higher number than we typically see at the start of the year for homelessness. And in reaching out and speaking with Doris, we have already about 50 families that are receiving N68 Hours of Hunger. So I just want to put a call out to the community, if anyone is interested in supporting families or supporting the district, N68 Hours of Hunger is a wonderful way to do that, and Doris Demers is still active with that, as is Sue Caswell. So please reach out to, you can reach out to me, and I can connect with them, or you can just reach out to the SAU office.
Excuse me, Suzanne. So as far as helping, are there, do you accept, like, food donations anywhere, or are you strictly looking for monetary donations?
Monetary is best for Doris, just because then, when they go shopping, they can get what they need for each individual family. And then, just beginning next week, we're going to have some STAR and Acadians testing, and so I'll be sending notification home to families regarding the universal testing that will be happening at the school buildings, but if parents are interested in learning more about that, or the community is, it's all up on our website with current dates. So I encourage people to look at that as well. And late in October, we will have our, the NMSQT PSATs happening, and that's also on the website. Information about that is on the website.
Share with the board the invitation we have to practice the writing assessment?
Sure. So the New Hampshire State Assessment is going to be adding a writing portion to the state assessment beginning this year, and they put a call out to find out if there were any schools that would be interested in participating in the pilot for that. So the students would come in and take, it would be one writing prompt, and it would reflect what would be happening later in the spring. And so we will, I will be sending a notice to the DOE and letting them know that our fourth grade and our seventh grade would be interested in participating in the pilot. So that would give faculty and students a little window into what that state assessment will look like when it happens in the spring. Great? Any questions? Fourth and seventh. It's short, it's one assessment, and I've been told it's short, so.
That was my question.
Yes. It's one writing prompt, it's supposed to be short, but that's part of the reason why we want to do it, is we want to get a window in to see what it's going to be like.
It'll benefit our teachers as well, and the entire state. So the number of school systems that volunteer ultimately influence the outcome that comes this spring, so. So, giving the kids and the teachers an opportunity to do this where it doesn't count is really an amazing opportunity for us. I did this in Maine 25 years ago, and our teachers left with so much information about, you know, what to expect, and how it will be assessed. So, I think it's a really amazing opportunity for our staff.
Thank you.
Superintendent's Report.
Thank you Denise. So, you know, I don't want to repeat what the principals have said, but it was an extraordinary opening, and they've given credit to their staff, but I know they mean, when they say "staff," not just the teachers, but the paraeducators and the tutors, as well as our bus drivers and child nutrition, nutrition workers, and our tech staff. When you open a school, it takes a lot of hands to make sure it works, as well as it did. A big shout out tonight to Lisa Huppie. It was the most efficient opening of buses in all the 12 years I've been here. On the second day, David actually sent her an email saying, "Thank you very much." All the buses were on time at Moheramont on that day, other than a van that we knew was picking up children from around the district. That happened across the district, and Amy and Suzanne and I were out monitoring the buses, taking the times and reporting them back to Lisa, so she would know where the adjustments needed to be. But I have to say, wow, the best opening in terms of transportation. You can see this building, even though it's been used by the kids now for three days and the staff for five, the custodial staff did an amazing job. It's always crunch time for them. We use this, we use this building for the first time for all summer programs, or nearly all summer programs, with the exception of a few kids at the high school. And so, Catherine and Suzanne worked together to create a different schedule than we've ever used before, that, which was a four-day week, and starting a week later, ending a week earlier, excuse me, so that the custodial staff could come in here and do what you've seen. And I touched base with the custodial staff in this particular building because of, of the use of it, and they said that having Friday off and having that extra week made all the difference. So, Moheramont, Massway Buildings, A to Z were cleaned. Amy had custodians go from those schools to this school and the high school. And so, when you see the buildings and how wonderful they look, it truly is the product of all of our custodians across the district, and kudos to them. Maintenance staff, of course, they've been working without a director. Amy's been assuming that role and stepping up. And what I would say there is, Patrick has been the lone maintenance person in the district, and he has not stopped. He's been right out there doing 110%. He's become Amy's right-hand person over the course of the summer, so I want to do a shout out to him. And of course, our tech staff. So, what happens when you go in the spring, all the computers work, everything's functioning, they come back, all the computers are opened, and then, the nightmare begins, because the gremlins over the course of the summer come in, and what was working in June isn't necessarily working in the fall. That happened in particular at the high school. Josh took his entire IT staff and landed at the high school and worked through literally hundreds of sinking problems, and they were all ready to go. So, when we think about opening school, the principals, rightfully so, rag about our instructors, and they certainly deserve kudos, but to make this district the way it is requires a lot of hands. And I want to give these administrators a shout out as well, because every single building opened perfectly. So, that's what I wanted to say about that. And then, I just wanted to talk to you about where we are in enrollment. So, we've been monitoring enrollment together since kindergarten registration, and we've come back and given you reports periodically, leading up to this month. I just want to remind the board that these numbers are not official numbers, these are the opening day numbers. The budget formula is based on October 1st enrollment, so we're still a month away from locking these numbers in. But this is a perfect 2,100 students, and it's pretty much where we thought we would be. You look at the numbers across the board, there were no surprises from April to today. As David said, kids go, kids come, but the net number is pretty much what we expected when we were making our budget together. And then, in staffing, unlike other years, we actually have opened up as, the best we have in, since the pre-COVID year. So, in terms of tutors, we're down three tutors. We were actually not down three tutors until last week, when they started moving on to teaching positions or other jobs that they were interested in. So, those positions are open, so if anybody is interested in tutoring our children, just requires a college degree, and we'd love to have you consider us. We're down five paraeducators, most of those are special ed paraeducators. Use that as a reference. This is a great number, because in the past, we've been down as many as 20. And so, you know, we've made great inroads there. Catherine and her assistant directors have done a really great job of hiring this summer. We're only down one custodian as we open the year, that's also an amazing number. We're down just one school nutrition worker, that hasn't happened in a while. And we're only down one teacher at this point, due to a late reassignment in special education. And here's the surprise of the evening, we're only down one driver. So, you know, for a lot of years before COVID, and then, more so after COVID, drivers have been harder to find than hen's teeth, and Lisa's been doing a really good job of recruiting, so kudos again to her. So, that's your staffing report, your enrollment report, and I think that covers what I wanted to say tonight, other than thank you to every employee in the district for making this such a welcoming opening for our students.
Thank you.
Good evening. So, I don't know, do you want to discuss the DOE 25 first? I just want to let you know that it has been submitted and reviewed by the Department of Ed, and it has been approved. So, once you make your motion, that will be sent off to the Department of Ed.
So, when you make the motion, and second, and approved, I'm going to pass this folder around. Please note where your name is, and sign on the same line across from where your name is typed. Don't skip a line, because then we'll have to redo the whole thing in another meeting, so just be really super careful. This is one of those times where your signature is, is critically important.
Can I have a motion to approve the DOE 25? Brian?
Motion to approve the DOE 25 as presented.
And a second, Heather? All in favor? Seven in favor, so that is approved. We can start, yep, start with Tom, and we'll go way around. And now, it looks like we have the MS-25.
So, the MS-25 is just a sub-report of the DOE? And that is the report that's used by the Department of Revenue to set the tax rates, so it's just a subset of the DOE.
All right. And can I have a motion to approve the MS-25? Brian?
Motion to approve the MS-25 as presented.
And a second, Heather? All in favor? Seven in favor. Any other updates?
I'm sorry?
Any other updates, or?
Oh, the other update is, as Superintendent Morse talked about, it's been a very busy summer, but I want to thank everybody at the SAU office, they've been really helpful in my transition, and they've made it very easy. Just for the board to know, the audit has been completed, and we expect to have the final report before Halloween. So, it was a very smooth summer.
And then, adequacy, it looks like adequacy is also listed.
It is, so there was a memo in your packet that shows you the change in the adequacy. So, back in November of '22, Dr. Morse and Sue Caswell sent you a memo, letting you know that there was going to be a loss of adequacy, approximately $847,000. That was an estimate in November. They set the final number in September with the ADM number that comes from your end-of-year numbers, and the state also changed the adequacy formula itself. So, with those changes, we are actually going to receive an additional from the loss, so I don't want anyone to think we're getting additional, additional money, but the loss was $847,000. The loss this year will actually be $457,738. So, the state's new formula will be sending, or you saw over, an additional $389,580. So, while that's not the full funding back from the previous year, it's a help. With the fund balance that we're anticipating from the DOE 25 and other revenues, we expect to be able to meet your obligations to the taxpayers at the last annual district meeting. Does anybody have any questions? I don't know if anybody attended some of the online professional development that the DOE was giving on the changes to adequacy. It's, it's a little bit complicated, and it's a bit hard to follow, but there are some simple changes. They are going to be increasing the base rate from where normally would be get approximately $3,800 a student, they've increased it to $4,100 a student. And they've changed the law, so rather than increasing adequacy in the biennium, they're built in a 2% increase each year.
I think it was amusing, one day, I walked up to Amy's, Amy's office, and she was trying to reconcile the state's formula with her, her analysis of the formula, and I think she probably had lumps on her head banging it on the table, because it's so frustrating to try to do that.
My name is spelled wrong.
Can I say I didn't do it?
That's okay, do, can I like, strike it and fix it? And we're just good to go, or do we need to reprint it and re-sign it?
You can strike it.
Yes.
They're more concerned, actually, of the superintendent and the chair signing the exact spot.
You mean, they're not concerned about me and Muthers?
Amy misspoke. You're the most important board member to sign this, Heather.
She's very important, but I've had it returned for the superintendent.
Which I signed wrong the first time.
You did. Any other questions for me?
Thank you. Student Representative Maeve has a game tonight, and that's why she is not here. Finance Committee Report.
We met on August 30th, and basically, just touched on issues that will be involved in the budget this year. We didn't, trying to clear out just some of the weeds and some of the swampy stuff that's out there, so a lot of it you already heard tonight. We had an update on the adequacy amount. We went over some potential warrant articles that we're looking to do this year, basically involving our turf field. Our turf field is, it is deteriorating faster than we had planned because of additional use that it's had. It has been used a lot, and when it's used a lot, it ends up having a shorter lifespan. So, we're probably about three, anywhere between two and four years from having to replace that field, which means we're going to have to start putting some money away to start doing that. And on top of that, we're going to be looking, in conjunction with that, we're going to be looking at fees to use the field, because the use is so much that we have to at least recoup something to offset the excessive use we have, because we have, as many people using non-school groups are using it as much as the school is. So, we have to figure out a fair way to, to share that cost.
How many years, because I feel like originally, we were told...
They average about 10 years.
Right, and how many, how many years in are we?
We've had it.
Oh, really? Wow, okay.
So, we're actually, yeah, so we're right on to 10 years mark, approximately.
Just a quick question on that. Did you guys discuss on the warrant, the way it's, the way it is in our board goals, it would just be for a trust fund for future field replacement? Is there, did you discuss any value to adding that that money could be used for maintenance, repairs? I'm just asking it as an open question, I don't have a strong opinion on it.
We're looking at two different things that we're doing. One of them was a revolving fund to put fees that we charge into it, because we have to have, it's a separate process, we have to have a separate fund for. The other fund is one strictly for the field, where we're just putting money into the field from the fund balance each year, or anything like that. That's a separate warrant article that we have to do, so it might be a, not a full ballot, but it's going to be a couple of extra questions on the ballot.
So, Dan, we didn't talk about it more globally, we were more concerned about the upcoming cost of replacing the fields, so it didn't get into a more global discussion.
Yeah, and just, just food for thought, in terms of the longevity of the effectiveness of the warrant, it might be prudent to add some flexibility into it, if that's what's needed, to allow us, let's say that, once the field is replaced, that it would allow us some flexibility to do repairs out of that line, instead of just having it only accessible for full replacement.
And the other thought of that, Dan, too, is now we have two fields, so anytime we get into, or anytime you get into the future of replacing those, are going to be pretty high, so I think we should think about that carefully, and perhaps budget accordingly on your operating budget for other things, but keep that specifically for those two fields, because that would be very cost-heavy.
And the replacement costs of a field, if the, under, the drainage and everything underneath it is just fine, just to replace the carpet, you're looking at $700,000, $800,000 minimum, today. Three years from now, we're probably looking at a million. So, just to keep that in mind. Obviously, if everything, if there's any issues under there, it, it adds on to that as well, so...
And just one last thought on that. So, although the replacement costs of the two turf fields are the highest replacement costs, there are many other fields that, depending on what we end up doing with facility use fees, you know, baseball and softball, for example, would generate revenue, and then, if that revenue were only to be spent on the turf fields, that might be perceived as an equity issue, so that, that would be something we should think about.
So, outside of budget drivers, we talked about the estimated fund balance, which is on the DOE 25 that you have in front of you today. And we also talked about changing banks. Our bank that we've used for years here in the district has been bought out, and the new bank, which will remain nameless, has caused several payroll issues. So, we have another bank that is very, that has a really, really good eTreasury account, which is what we need for, for a school district to handle, right now, about three, over $2 billion of school districts' funds in the state right now. So, we're going to, looking to go to a major bank, which should be happening as we speak. And that's pretty much it, until we meet again.
Any questions? Yes, Gianna?
This is just to bounce back to the turf field idea. I know one of the reasons when the turf was proposed initially at the high school was the heavy use with turf being a more sustainable thing than actual grass. Is that still true, based upon the numbers that we're getting in on the increased wear on it?
Yeah, I would say that's true, Hannah.
You cannot, you cannot get the use of, if we used a grass field as much as we used the turf field, it wouldn't last three weeks.
It wouldn't be any grass.
Yeah, it would be mud, after three weeks.
We don't have the ability, because of the size of our property, to rotate our fields. In big school systems, they'll shut down a field for season and use another field. Our situation is, our property is so confined that we don't have the ability to shut them down. And so, because of that, just normal wear and tear through sports seasons, you, you would have a, basically, a lot of very ugly fields. And that's one of the reasons we went to the turf fields. And those fields are actually opened earlier and stay open longer than we would with natural grass. So, it's, it's actually, that part of it is, is working well.
And because we live in New England, our growing season for grass is extremely short by the time we need it. So, you know, you'd have to keep people off the fields for a lot longer, where now, we, they're on the fields when there's still snow on the ground, because the snow melts quicker on a, on a turf field as well, because of the warmth, the heat of the rubber underneath it, so...
Right, thank you. My, just general observation simply is that turf fields do not meet sustainability goals because of their inability to be recycled, they are a massive landfill problem. But I understand the limitations that we're working under. I just was giving a background of why I asked.
Superintendent's Search Committee Update?
Much is happening. Although not too terribly much to report. So, we are moving forward with the focus groups, and working with... So we are moving forward with the focus groups and working with Jen and Catherine and Wendy to get those publicized and to work on logistics for spaces and those kinds of things for the in-person groups. And those three women are absolutely amazing and fabulous, and I am very appreciative for them. And we have a meeting next week to start thinking about the structure to propose for the screening committee. And so the idea would be to sort of work through some of those details and present them to you at our next school board meeting. And then finally, on your calendars, this is on the memo from last time, the dates was, hang on, let me find my calendar again. Okay. So it was November 30th, December 1, December 4, and December 5. Block them all. Yes.
Could you repeat those, please?
Yes. November 30, December 1, December 4, and December 5. Those will be the dates for the on-campus interviews. That gives us some flexibility in terms of a snow day. And we're, as a committee, we're still working on the idea of formatting and structure for those days, but we want to make sure those are in place on everyone's calendar because there will be busy days. We'll have candidates who are shuttling around the district. We'll have the school board interview. And then the plan is to also have a public forum for the candidates to meet the public. And so there's a lot of stuff happening, but we have managed to accommodate musical performances, I think. I think we got everybody to where they need to go. And, and that's, that's where we're at. And so there'll be more as we keep going.
Heather, can you tell the full board what date in November, that there, or December, I can't remember which one, where there's a conflict and we're gonna move the board meeting to the high school?
Yes. So December 6th, our board meeting. In sort of the horse trading that happened, we are going to empty this space for MoHaramit's fourth grade concert. And we are going to relocate to another location for that meeting, probably the high school library. But I would need to confirm with the gentlemen who do all our AV that they are happy with that choice.
I can say that they'd rather use the high school than going out into the elementaries in December. So I'm pretty confident that they would rather.
So that's one venue change. And then the other venue change is the budget workshop may also be similarly, we may be changing that venue as well. So those two are back to back. The budget workshop is on November 29th, and then the regular board meeting is on December 6th. And those may not be in this space. Well, the sixth won't be here. But otherwise, we're still working on, yeah, logistics for where to move those to. The workshop's easier since there's no AV.
I think I saw this in the email. What are the, we had the focus group dates. Could we reiterate where those are?
Yes. The remote focus group dates. You'd think I'd have this memorized by now, and you would be wrong. So I'm gonna cheat and see what Jen told me. Cause Jen, Jen is like the hammer, and she is fantastic. And she's like, we're doing this, and we're doing this, and we're doing this. And I sent her emails, and I'm really excited that I can cross something off my list. And then she emails me back, and I'm like, dah! So it's the 27th and the 4th.
September 27 and October 4. First being a remote and then in person.
September 27th is remote.
Yes. And October 4 is in person. I just had to find your email to make sure I didn't screw up the dates.
And who is, who is going to be, so it's NESDEC that is going to be facilitating those?
NESDEC facilitates all of that. We do nothing.
And board members should or should not attend any of those if they, because I realize that board members are also parents and, you know. So I guess the question is, is, I think we had talked before about it's better for board members not to be there? I'm not sure.
For...
At any of the, at the focus groups?
For the focus groups, I, I can double check with Carolyn, but I do not think there's any issue with us attending the community ones. We should not attend any of the other ones because the teachers or the staff or the admins or the directors or the students, those we should not attend. But the community ones, I think as community members, we have every right to attend.
And I would just recommend you don't sit together. Spread yourself through the room so nobody thinks you're doing board work. So the 27th and the 4th are community focus group days? And that's okay to put out to the public?
Yes. And Jen is all over that, starting tomorrow.
There's different time slots for everyone.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So the remote, once we get the links and we have all of that nailed down, that will go out. We have a communication plan for all of that. Right now, we're just saving the dates. So we've got all of that. And then the survey will open up on September 15th. And so if you are unable to attend a focus group, or you did attend a focus group, but you thought of something you would like to add to the comments that happened at the focus group, the online survey will be available through our website. There is a superintendent search page on our website, and that will be open starting the 15th for people to add their comments. NESDEC gets all of that. Carolyn will put that together, and then she will come and present the candidate profile generated from all of that data on the second meeting in October. We'll have a workshop after the meeting. Yes. It'll be open September 15th to either October 5th or 6th. So either a day or two past the in-person focus group. And then we march into November where I'm gonna see a whole lot of Tom and Brian. I think there's one week. I see them every night.
Have, I'm curious if any, any, are applications at this point already being submitted? Cause I know the information is out there.
Yeah. Carolyn has talked to several folks that are interested in the position. I don't know if anyone's technically applied yet, but she has been talking to people that have called and have inquired or really interested and have questions. So there, there is interest. She is fielding candidates.
Any other questions regarding superintendent search? All right. Thank you very much. It's exciting that things are moving ahead. All right. Let's see. We are up to unanimous consent, and we only have one item, so I assume we're not... Oops. Did I forget? I'm sorry. Yes.
I think we have a communication update.
Oh. Oh.
I can step aside.
It's, no, it's fine. I just didn't say, oh, it's down below. I got it. Yes. Please do your communication update. That is fine.
Hi, everyone. Genevieve Brown, Communication Specialist for the District. Here tonight to present a quick update, two-fold update. So first half will be the website, and second is Parent Square. As y'all remember, the website recently launched on June 29, 2023. Over the spring and summer, we trained several folks, myself, the Director of IT, Digital Learning Specialist for the four buildings, and I would say about half the current and future web editors. I try to come here with hard data, and when I look at my activity log online in the content management system, I only see an infinite scroll of updates. So I can't provide you an accurate amount, and the vendor's unable to provide me with a report. But there's an infinite scroll of updates that have been made since the website launched. We're talking about directory updates, that's new staff, people that are moving on to other professional adventures, new content, new page edits, and some navigation tweaks here and there. We look at analytics. One feature that we did not have on the previous site is analytic data on every single page. So this is a snapshot that I took on Wednesday last week, so first day at school, 10:00 AM. We had 15,000 users and almost 200,000 event count. So a user is someone on a device. So if you visit the website on your mobile device or your laptop, it's considered two users. So the numbers are a little skewed here. And an event is any click or interaction on a webpage. We look at the top 10 page views. That's again, as of last week. The high school homepage was first, then we had the district. The middle school calendar comes in fourth, then we have MoHaramit. The webpage dedicated to registration, Power School, Massway, then the O R M S Families Index, which is the back-to-school, school supply webpage that we built, and then the website directory. We also have a survey, and we're collecting feedback on all the homepages of all the websites. So that's the district and all four schools. It's located right under the quick links. The website survey was added right before the 4th of July weekend, and we did not see a whole lot of traffic over the summer. People were on holiday, overlapping vacations, very low traffic on the website in general. We had, I think we had 12 responses by the end of July. But we've been promoting it. Starting the week of August 23rd, the principals added it to their family newsletter, and then I added it to the district newsletter that went out last week. And so as of Wednesday last week, we had received a total of 24 responses. And I checked again this morning, we're now at 29. So I think we still have a little bit of work to do to increase that number and have more representative data, but we'll get there. I think with back-to-school traffic, people are more exposed to it, they're getting more use of the website, they'll have more opinion, and hopefully they'll be willing to share them. The website is available online until September 30th. The next steps will be to analyze the data, prioritize enhancements, and also implement them. Also to keep in mind that there might be some navigational modifications that will have to wait until next summer, just so people are not confused with the navigation currently available on the website. Any question about that first half before I dive into Parent Square? All right. Parent Square update. First, a shout out to our Creme de la Creme IT team. That's mainly Josh Olstad and Bob Schroboll, who've been working miracles behind the curtain. All the database migration sync, that's entirely them. So big shout out. Also, building administrators and front office teams who've really worked good sports in training and learning this very expensive and comprehensive new platform, and the high school athletic teams. We migrated to Parent Square, you'll remember, in June. Main reason is our contract with School Messenger expired in June, so we had little choice there. The district and the school communications to families and main staff is mainly how we use Parent Square right now, so it's the same extent as School Messenger. Communication to families so far, Director IT sent an email in June letting everyone know that we would be migrating to a new platform. It's been included a few times in the principal newsletters. We have now a dedicated webpage with the FAQ online to help families learn the platform. We also sent multiple district and school posts via Parent Square. And the next email to family will be about account registration and helping people to claim their account, which is already created, they just need to tie and claim it. And this will enable new features for them, such as being able to view and download attachments. So right now, again, we're limited into what we do with Parent Square. It's building administrators, front office, the SEU office, and the high school athletics team. The users that I just mentioned have all been trained, and it's ongoing training because as we dip our toes in the platform and learn how to expand our abilities, and we'll unlock so many other features. So next few weeks, I'll be training the digital learning specialist. So that will be helpful to have boots on the ground in the buildings to support those teams. Again, we'll roll out more functionalities and include classroom communications next year to 2425. I will be working on a best practices resource this year, as well as expand the amount and quality of the training guides and templates that we currently have. The new functionalities that we can think about for next year and maybe later this year, forms, permission slips, signups, RSVPs, and social media integration. What's exciting about Parent Square is that we're gonna launch a pilot program, which is something no one's ever done according to Parent Square. So again, we're blazing the path. We'll open enrollment to teachers and all Wee Street River staff that are interested in learning about the platform. It's not a no pressure, but it'll give them a little bit more of a zero entry point into the pool. This Parent Square can be a daunting platform. It's very expensive, there's a lot of functionalities. And everyone will see training. So we want to target staff, teachers, club managers, high school level, middle school, and include teachers of all grades, including elementary as well. The feedback from everyone enrolled in the pilot program will help us create a robust training program for everyone else to make sure that we onboard 2425 in good shape. That's what I got for you tonight. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Going back to unanimous consent, we only have one item, so I don't think we need to pull it out. If this is for a, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve a Wee Street River Middle School maternity leave of absence from February 1st, 2024, to the end of the school year. Can I have a second? Tom? And all in favor? And that is seven in favor. All right. So the next thing on our agenda is a discussion about school board members who can be present for the New Hampshire, what's SAA? I know it's, it's part of the New Hampshire School Board Association, but what SAA, is it? It's wrong. I was gonna say, I, cause it's New Hampshire School Board Association. And that meeting is on October 14th, on a Saturday. Gianna mentioned that she is already registered because we had, we're the School Board of the Year award recipients. They have asked us to do a presentation at that assembly. And Matt has offered to put together a PowerPoint. However, if there's other people who are interested in doing that, also looking for anyone who would like, I plan to go to present, but I would also love to have anyone else who would like to join me in that. I know Gianna, Gianna's going to be there, so Gianna will be there. Is there anyone else who would be interested in attending? It's a Saturday, October 14th. I believe it starts at 10, I wanna say 10:30-ish and goes until like 2 PM. And it is at the Griponi Center in Concord. So I, what I will say is if there's anyone decides they are interested, they can just let Jim know if, if you are interested. And also if people in terms of have, I wonder about ideas for the presentation? Or maybe we can just bring the presentation, once we have a draft, bring it back to the board?
Yeah. I, I have the letter that I wrote that brought you to the honor of being the School Board of the Year. I'll give that to Matt. That would give him a beginning framework for the PowerPoint. And then if you have things that you think that you've experienced on the school board that you're incredibly proud of, and this is an incredible honor, I don't think we should kind of poo-poo it. There's only one school board that gets this honor every single year, and you all deserve this honor. So when you think back, back to, you know, Tom's nine years and Brian's seven years and Dan's nine years, eight years, there's a lot of things that have happened that have created this school board to be so, so highly functional. So, you know, when I wrote it, I was writing it from a superintendent's perspective. If, I'm sure that Matt would appreciate thoughts that you have that he could incorporate into the presentation to make it more meaningful.
Okay. Any questions or anything further about that? Okay. So then, discussion of school board goals. We have an updated draft. We have an updated draft.
There's one thing I'd actually like to back up on, because I think it would fall under the N H S B A meeting. If I may. The resolution that Tom and I drafted was rejected by the School Board Association. Unusually enough, their other resolutions that were there, they had a comment for improving it. And ours was the only one that did not get a discussion on what could be done to improve it. Tom told me that perhaps we should reach out to Barrett Christina, and I was thinking that maybe we should, because I'm not quite sure they understood what the intent was on the rejection. So I was wondering if folks would be okay if I reached out and asked if there was something that could be done to change the outcome? Because the criticism was that the resolution was overly broad. But that was exactly the point. What we were addressing was, was a RSA that was overly broad, which created the problem. So I think it's a discussion that might need to be had. I'm not sure of its efficacy, but I wanted to see what folks thought. That was within one of the emails that Wendy had forwarded, but I'm not sure everybody saw it. It came in like Tuesday.
I'm not, I'm not sure as far as once a resolution has been rejected.
I mean, this happened, we didn't get rejected before. We got voted down before. So I think Gianna's question is legitimate.
Right, it was simply, I worded that incorrectly. The idea was that it was not recommended to be voted yes for. So the thing is, is that it's still going to be discussed. It was just, the recommendation is not to pass it. But we didn't, but we didn't get feedback. I didn't think the feedback was very good on why, and it was clear that in other resolutions, there happened some back and forth with other people who had proposed something, and we did not. And I'd like to find out what we can do.
We experienced the same thing when we were putting forward the gun resolution. It was, would it take you three years from?
Yeah.
So part of it is just refining, but your point is well-made, Gianna. What is it we're refining? What is it that, you know, would get it before the delegates?
I would just add, I think it's consistent with our charge, you as our delegate, to gather as much information in preparation for the assembly as you can. Therefore, I feel it's appropriate to talk to Barrett to get a deeper understanding of their position beyond what they've stated officially. Having been to the assembly a number of times, a lot is sort of revealed in the assembly unnecessarily, that frankly could be, I think, accomplished with simple conversation. It's also worth, because you know, one of your, one of your chief objectives in being the delegate is to make the case for the resolution. There will be other delegates who will ask questions that you'll have an opportunity to answer. They'll ask questions of the board who recommended, you know, not supporting the resolution. So again, I think to your point, it's worth, it's worth having that conversation to learn a deeper understanding of why. And then that'll equip you to better present during the assembly.
And Gianna noted that she had submitted to go to the delegate assembly. Wendy will do that for any workshop that you all want to go to in relation to the School Boards Association. So they continuously send you monthly updates about what's happening. If you see something you want to attend, Wendy will register you. Just let her know that you want to attend it. We have funds for your professional development, just like we do for the teachers and other groups.
Sorry, go ahead.
Because I didn't see the communication from the School Boards Association. Was there any other resolution that dealt with, like the S B two divisive concepts?
No, there was not.
So this is the only one that even touched on such an important issue? And I just think that it was, it wasn't overly broad, because it was limited to curricular issues. I recognize that there might be some other behavioral things that if a teacher does, might need to have a different route, but it.
Right, one of the objections was within it, they were saying that it was too broad, saying it hit curricular and counseling and all these other issues. But it actually didn't, because we were addressing the particular RSA. So it's actually, in my view, a misinterpretation of the law. The closest other resolution that was submitted that would touch upon that was Dover did submit something regarding autonomy of librarians. That'd be the closest thing.
Because I think what, in our drafting of it, not to get into too much detail, but we're really looking at the criminalization of teaching. And, and teaching, if a teacher does something that a complaint could bypass the locals, the local policies of the board, and that that teacher would be vulnerable to these serious penalties for an act of teaching.
Right, exactly. That's why I found the response.
That's what we're opposed to, and that's, I think that's the rotten core of S B two. And so, so I just, I just hope that we, you know, win or lose, we really make a case for it. And sometimes you lose, and then you win the next time. But the fact that this is the only one that deals with such an important issue, I mean, if somebody had a better one, okay, fair enough. But the fact that this is the only one that deals with such an important issue, I think it's really important that we make, we make the case. And then if, if a different kind of resolution could come out of that debate, well, maybe next time we make that. But I think, you know, I think we have to fight for it.
Gianna, if I could just piggyback Dan's comment. He's absolutely right. When you're presenting, there'll be people in the room who weren't thinking the same way we were. And what happened on the gun resolution is we actually started creating a mini coalition within the group. And so by the third year, we had like-minded school systems. I think it was Exeter and Portsmouth who signed on to our resolution. So ultimately, we had this pretty powerful group saying, this is important to us, we shouldn't have guns in school.
So I would predict that based upon what some of the other resolutions were, what school districts, I would be looking at Dover, frankly. But yeah, I agree with what you're saying, Tom. And so I thought we should fight for it too, because I do think it was, their interpretation wasn't correct. But it meant that the way the language we used perhaps didn't make it clear. So we'll see what we can do about that. But yeah, I'll fight for it.
The organization is relatively conservative. And they'll say, like they did with us, no, until they see the numbers are switching. And so one of the things that Rachel and I can do is, Rachel can reach out to her school systems that she's working with. I can reach out to superintendents. So in round two, you know, we can start building that mini coalition, and it's a kind of a powerful voice at that point, of like-minded school systems.
Right, just for, to kind of reemphasize for anybody who might be listening, the issue and question here is that the RSA, which I can't pull up the number, the chapter offhand, it originally started as S B two, but it's now actually the law, so it's an RSA now. The issue with it is, is that if anybody in the community objects to something a teacher is teaching, rather than going through the channels that already are extant, like coming to the principal, coming to the school district, coming to the, the school board itself, it can automatically go into the Superior Court. It becomes a civil and even criminal case. It ends up being a felony. And that actually is the objection, because that's a terrifying thing for a teacher to have, that they could actually be accused of a crime, have their license revoked for teaching without it going through the channels. So that's what we were trying to make clear of why this is. Because to me, this isn't even, you know, a conservative or liberal thing. This is actually, this is, this is a teaching thing, being able to teach. So just in case other people are listening, I wanted to clarify why Tom and I in particular were objecting to this, and why we put it forth.
All right, thank you. I realize too, before we move on to the school board goals, which was not, actually, I thought it was on the agenda, and it's not. No, the school board goals, I'm looking at the letter which we had asked Tom and Gianna to write. Not sure if folks have had a chance to look at the draft. My thought is to wait until our next, because I'm not sure if people had a chance to actually look at the draft. I know it was put in our folder today. I'm thinking we can wait until the next board meeting to review this. Yes?
I did read it, and I don't necessarily disagree with anything that's in it. But I kind of, I take issue with, first of all, I think we went outside the scope of what this letter was supposed to be about. It was supposed to be about the one class, and it kind of went off at the end. I also want us to be careful about the wording and how you go after the Department of Education. I can tell you, I can tell you from the district that I'm in now, that took on the Department of Education, Square on, as Dr. Morris was involved in, you, what you'll end up doing is bringing undue attention. If you go scorched earth like this, you're going to bring undue attention to the district. And I'm already up to about 18 audits that we didn't really need to have, but were given by the Department of Education, which doesn't affect the board, but affects Dr. Morrison, everyone that's sitting out there. So I want to be careful how we word this. And I really want to stick to the, the charge that we gave, which was strictly the finance class, not PragerU as a whole, because that really wasn't part of the original discussion. So I think a rewrite might be needed.
I will address that. I wrote it in such a way that the bottom half could be edited off, just completely. But I understand what you're saying. Essentially, what you're saying is you're having a fear of retaliation for actually stating an opinion to the Board of Education, which in itself is actually kind of a, that's kind of scary, actually, when you're thinking about that. But I wanted to give the background of why I ended up writing it this way, because I know that we had quasi-agreed to.
I guess I'm, I'm just thinking, because I, I'm not sure everyone had a chance to read it. I'm just thinking that it, probably we can put it on the agenda for our next meeting and have a discussion around it. Because I, I would like to move on to school board goals.
Okay, so what I was suggesting this one is, because actually, we can't put it off. The next meeting for the Board of Education is September 16th, where this PragerU is back up for review.
It's, all right, so it is up for the next.
But what I can do, because I anticipated this objection, is remove anything after, I could remove the entire third rationale. Everything below it, everything, including that paragraph, and simply make it a couple rationales, and then it'll simply be short.
That actually was what I was thinking, so.
I mean, so I wrote it that way, anticipating this objection, but I wanted to say why I thought that way. I know we're running long here in the meeting. And the reason is, is that I spent quite a bit of time over the last couple weeks looking and analyzing the website. And I did the entire literacy course. Yes, I did the entire literacy course. And the reason I did that is I wanted to see how, how good it was. And frankly, it wasn't. There's really not much they could do without revamping the entire financial literacy to make it actually a robust program, particularly since I already know that ours is better, so there's no need. And I did rest that in the letter. The problem to me is, is that it absolutely is an opening into giving credence to an organization that is boldly white nationalist and white supremacist. And there's really no way of pretending that it's not.
Okay, again, I feel like we're kind of.
I'm just saying, so it's like, you know, I will, I will do the edit, but I want to just make it very clear that more is at stake here than a financial literacy class. Much more is at stake.
So there is a suggestion. Go ahead, Tom.
I, I think the thing, it would work if we took, if we just had one point that we made. Because I think the first argument, that we already have a course here, but some other places might not. I don't think that's a particularly strong argument, and I would take that out. And I think just have the one, I think it would work if we just had the one argument, which is, I think, that, that just the weakness of the, of the course. So I mean, I think, because I think we do have, if we're going to do it, we need to do it probably tonight. But I think if, if that were done, I think we would have a pretty solid educational argument against it, and we'll be on record for that, so.
So are you agreeing with Brian's suggestion of cutting it off at, so the, the, cutting it off where the third rationale down would be gone?
Third wouldn't be gone, and the first wouldn't be gone, and would just be the second one.
Well, could you, what paragraph, why don't you go with paragraph numbers? What paragraph are you talking about taking?
I was removing paragraph two.
Oh, taking out, removing paragraph two.
Two, and then only keeping one, three, and four.
Okay, so keep one, three, and four. Okay. Any other, so what we're looking at is just keeping paragraphs one, three, and four?
Just a quick question procedurally. So I, I agree with this, for what that's worth. And then going forward, I think this is probably something we should keep on our radar and maybe have a deeper discussion about once everyone's had an opportunity to read it. I don't think we'll have the urgency necessarily, but if we can fit it in, it might be, it might be worth having the opportunity, unless, you know, people feel like they have a handle on it. This is, probably isn't going away. The other thing is.
It will pass.
Yeah, the other thing is to, as we were talking about earlier, to perhaps reach out to other school boards for their, maybe they're not aware of this. To, to the extent maybe that we are. And that, you know, maybe there's a coalition, as Dr. Morris was saying, to, to be built down the road.
Yeah, there's a pretty strong coalition that exists. We're actually coming in on the, not the back end, but midway, because at the state board meeting, you had objections being made by major organizations in the state, including the supers, the school board, well, not the school board, the N E A, A F T individuals. So the state board has heard this loud and clear. I think that others have done the attacking PragerU for its right-wing-ness, if that's the right way to say it. And so I think for us, folks, thinking of educational peace is going to bring home the point you guys all wanted to make, that this is not an unusual argument. The superintendent, Lisa Witt, wrote a scathing letter to the state board about the politics of the organization, so they're well aware.
And it's not, it's not the fear of the D O E. It's, they can do a lot, and we don't have a say in it. So, but the people that are paying for it are the ones that are sitting out there and have to do all the work. So we have to keep that in mind, that, you know, politics or not, there's a, there's a consequence to every action. So we just have to understand what those consequences are.
All right, so doing, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Heather.
In the fifth paragraph, there is a sentence I wouldn't mind moving up if, when we do it, PragerU, despite its name, is not a university, nor is it an accredited educational institution. I think that might need to go up towards the top before we start talking about its lack of competencies and five-minute videos.
Okay, does that make sense? So we'll keep that one sentence, it can be moved to the top. So do we, do we need to do a vote on this, or we just discussed it that?
I would do a vote for the record, absolutely.
All right, so given the modifications that we made, essentially keeping paragraphs one, three, and four, and moving the sentence about Prager, PragerU not being a university or an accredited educational institution, can I have a motion for Gianna to make those edits and submit to the New Hampshire Board of Education? Tom?
I move that we approve this letter and have Gianna submit it to the, move this, approve this letter as, as we've modified it, and she can submit it to the state board of education.
Okay, and is there a second? Matt? Okay, all in favor? And that is seven in favor. So thank you, Gianna.
Gianna, when you have that complete, if you send it to Wendy, she'll put it on Letterhead and.
Yeah, I'll have it done tonight.
Okay, so moving on to school board goals. We have a revised draft. And first of all, maybe we can just take them, are we all set with theme? I believe we're all set with theme one. Are we, is everyone okay with theme one? I think we've laid it out, and it's moving along. So theme two has been revised. So any comments about theme two? Yes, Gianna?
I'm quite popular tonight, I know. All right. One of the things I'd, I'd like to see is the committee to include another stakeholder group, which would be a parent or two. Is that something people would be willing to do? Because I think that might be influential on how parents are thinking about it to help formulate questions. And then the second part is, is that I would really like to have the U N H S survey involved. One, it's really good at making sure that the. One, it's really good at making sure that the, they're professionals, to make sure there's no, to eliminate bias and to make sure the questions are clear, because historically, surveys that have been created by us have not been wonderful, and I'd like to make sure that this one's quite robust, so we can get the, we can get accurate information to analyze. That'd be my two cents on this one.
I guess I was thinking that they were, I mean, I know there's one A, review and amend the previous UNH survey, so my thinking is they would still be involved.
That was the question that I, you know, I was, I put out there as an option, we could do it ourselves. Unlike Gianna, I think we've done a pretty decent job on surveys, but I also appreciate UNH's expertise, and if that's the direction the board goes, I have no problem with it, I was just thinking about expediting this, but it, it makes no difference to me whether we do it ourselves or have UNH do it. I think the focus here is, is what, what I tried to do here is listen to all of you and focus the work. So I don't think that UNH has to do a 50-question survey, I think it can be focused in, I still think it could be a simple survey, the simpler the survey, focused in on the issues that are presented here, the greater the response we will get. If we, you know, I, I have looked at the survey that was developed pre-COVID, and it's all over the map. This charge really focuses the issue, and it'll make it much easier for UNH, and it will make it much easier for the people responding to the survey to address it. So I think what I was trying to do here is cut to the chase.
Right, I haven't been able to see that UNH survey, so I have absolutely no idea what's on it. But I understand the concern, it was just the latest survey, they were supposed to address this, that came out of the middle school, did not ask the right questions, and I'm quite fearful of that happening again. And as a second sideline here is, I know this was ended being limited to the middle school, and one of the things is, is that I actually think it might still be good to send it to the high school, particularly regarding B, which is our teachers reporting consistently in the way of the report, because I have a new freshman, and even coming from three syllabuses, syllabi that I have received, how the teachers are reporting things is already different. Each of the three teachers is already different, so I actually think we might want to ask that question to the high school as well.
I, I think we need to keep it to the middle school, because, again, to kind of back up in how this all came about, is that the middle school made the change to competency-based grading, and that was a big, that was a big change, going away from letter grades and going to competency-based grading. And there was concern, you know, people expressed concern about that, and now we're a few years into it, and, you know, our original idea was we wanted to get feedback, how is that working for folks? Unfortunately, the pandemic interrupted, but I, I just think we never really got a real answer to that question, and I, I'm worried that if we start expanding it, it, it'll just get muddled. So my feeling is that we want to kind of finish what we started and really hone in on some feedback from parents in terms of, are they getting the information, are students getting the information they need to be able to understand, you know, how they are progressing and they're learning? Are parents understanding that as well? It's not so much, and I, and the, the survey that you referenced, Gianna, I think the issue was, you know, okay, I can understand what this says on this, you know, this report card or what have you, but what does it mean? And that's, that's the piece that I, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, other board members, but that is the piece that we're trying to get at, is, you know, is it the, are the parents and the students getting the information they need to know how they are progressing and they're learning? Does that make sense? Yes, Tom?
I think the simpler, the better for this survey, and I would think that you could involve the survey center, but in a limited way. You could have this committee draft 10, you know, like agree, disagree, 10 statements, then maybe have the survey center just vet it, you know, so they read through it, say, okay, is this, is this clear? You could also do things, I think, like, like try it out. You know, you could have some, some middle school students, you know, you know, a small group, take it and see, does this make sense, you know, do you understand this? You could, there are steps you could take. I think rather than go to the, I think if you go to the survey center and ask them to set up a joint group to create the survey, I think that's a more of a cumbersome, and, and I think we got a kind of a convoluted product last time, don't you think, Jim?
I absolutely think that.
So I think if you say, okay, we have kind of the areas we want to go, could you, could you come up with a 10-item, agree, disagree, with a comment section, then ask maybe Andy Smith at the survey center, we just, could you just then look at it and see if this is biased, these statements, you know, you've, you've had experience, but maybe involve him that way as opposed to have them create the survey? Does that make sense? The other thing that I think we should have, and it's, it's not quite clear, does the board think that it should have the final, give the final go-ahead to the survey? I would think we would, so that when all this is done, and you have the survey for all three groups, it would come back to us and we'd say, okay, go.
Hundred percent agree with that, because I don't want to put this out and have the seven of you say, this isn't the questions we wanted.
Yeah, yeah.
I would just add, I agree with Tom, I think there's value in having the survey center their eyes on it to scan for any biases, lack of clarity, given the importance of this, and how long, for justifiable reasons, but how long we've put it off, I think it's, I think it's worth doing that to really get it as right as we can.
And in that respect, I agree with Gianna, that we should have not a cumbersome number of parents, but we should have parents involved in the creation of the, of the questions.
Absolutely. I'm agreeing with everything there, one thing, I don't know if we would be within here, we're talking about whether the parents and the students understand it and find the, the reporting to be beneficial, I actually think that's a question that should be going to the teachers as well, because that's feedback I've actually gotten from teachers where they're not sure about it, so I want to make sure that that's a component we're getting as well.
Yeah, so the survey audience is our teachers, our students, and our parents.
Yes.
Right, I was just saying that within A, B, and C, that's not clear that are the teachers getting the information that they need to be able to?
That would be one of the questions you'd ask. Yeah, and, and just to go back, Gianna, I don't want to beat a dead horse either, but you had mentioned the high school. So there's a fine balance between the work that we're talking about in terms of competencies, competency-based grading, and a teacher's initiative and how they teach. So every syllabus is going to be a reflection of the personality of the teacher and the, and the competencies that have been agreed to by the department. One of the things that makes this district way different than most districts is we value the creativity, innovation of our teachers. So as we start thinking about the high school situation, we're still miles away from having that conversation on reporting at the high school. I know that Becker and the teachers are having conversations, but they're nowhere near promoting anything to this body. The grading part of, of policy belongs here, the content creation belongs in the classroom, so we have to make sure that we always honor that process.
So just, and, so I'm, what I'm hearing is that we probably need, we've got a one A as far as reviewing and amending the previous UNH survey, you know, come up with the 10 questions, and we have a one, yeah, the one B, develop the 10 questions. It sounds like we need a one C, have the UNH survey center review the draft survey. You know, I, so that sounds like it should be a one C.
And then one D would be to bring it back for blessing of this body before it's distributed.
Yes, yes, one D, board.
Board approval.
Approval, yep. And then, one simple, just a typo, going back up to the A, B, and C part, B, our teachers reporting, and A, consistently in a way, so it's kind of, I think we can cross out the NAs, so our teachers reporting consistently in the way they report is record-keeping manageable.
Very good, thank you, that's very helpful.
Oh, yes, Heather.
I will say, I like the idea of, particularly in the A, asking about access, which I think is what a lot of the survey last time was about, can you get it, can you find it, those kinds of things, so I like, it's sort of a follow-up on that to continue that, but it's also delving more into the understanding, now that you've found it, do you actually understand what it is telling you? And I really like that that is part of A.
Thank you. So it sounds like I've captured it for the most part, and then I'll just, do you want to go forward and adopt it as amended, Denise, or do you want to see it one more time before you adopt it?
I think as far as this discussion here, I'm comfortable, but I, the other, I did have one other thing, which is, I thought under theme three, strategic plan, that we had decided to take that out completely.
We did.
Okay, so we just need to take that out, and then theme four becomes theme three, and theme five becomes theme four. I think with those changes, are we? Yeah.
I move to approve the board goals as they've been amended at this meeting.
Tom, and then is there a second? Heather? Heather, seconds? All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? And that is seven in favor, so we have adopted our board goals for the year.
At the timeline that we agreed to.
Awesome, thank you. School board committee updates, do we have any committees that have met? I know policy, policy committee is meeting next week, the sixth, I want to say the 16th off the top of my head. So, yes, Heather?
I have on my calendar that sustainability is meeting on the 21st.
A correction to the policy committee, it's the 14th that we will be meeting. Any other committee updates? Okay, then, let's see, any members of the public? No members of the public. Closing actions, so our next meetings are listed here, so the only thing that might be different, what I'm hearing, Heather, is that the October 26th board budget workshop might be moved? No, that one isn't moved, okay, that one is staying. Okay, all right, and I think we are ready for adjournment. Motion to adjourn? Oh, do we have something else? Do we have a non-meeting? Oh, strategy, oh, excuse me, I did not know that, or I didn't see it, I apologize, okay. But we still.
We still adjourn.
We would still adjourn because it's a non-meeting. So motion to adjourn, Heather, and a second? Dan, all in favor of adjourning? And seven in favor, we are adjourned, and we do have a non-meeting.